...our work and our goals this day. Father, we pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you.
Mr. Coven, you'll lead us on the page, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for coming tonight. I'd like to recognize elected officials. I'm pretty sure it's Sheriff Miller. Thank you, sir, for coming. And like always, he's always here. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not the one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium up front here and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be permitted. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period at the end of the agenda. With no items other to be considered, a motion now would be in order for the adoption of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
That's the regular agenda, it's consent.
Okay. Then items for approval on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that Item F, Workers' Compensation Settlement Authority, be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay.
You need to get the motion in a second, just the regular agenda item, the first one.
A motion and a second on the first agenda item? I need a motion on the first agenda to approve the agenda.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, and a second.
Second.
All in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include, this is Item Two of the consent agenda, you're adding G, Conflict of Interest Policy.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of amending the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Also like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item F will be moved to the last part of the agenda for future discussion for Commissioner Bennett. Now we'll move on to public comment. Mr. Cotton, anyone signed up for the first section?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on to the hospital, Onslow County Hospital Authority Audit Report. We have someone that's going to present that, Kevin Leader. Come on up, sir.
Thank you for the chance to be here. My name is Kevin Leader with Clifton Larson Allen, and we have completed the audit of the Onslow County Hospital Authority for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2017. And so I have a brief report. I think you have, do you have a copy of the summary? Okay. So I'll just hit on the highlights for you. You know, we did wrap up the audit and we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is a clean opinion and similar to what the authority has received in prior years. Says that everything is fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We did perform our audit in accordance with the plan, scope, and timing that was communicated to the authority commissioners during a planning phase. It was somewhat of a condensed timeline this year because the authority changed auditors. And so, you know, we were not engaged until after year end. Going forward, we do plan to get on more of a traditional timeline in fiscal '18. We performed a risk-based audit approach, which means, you know, we actually, you know, as auditors familiar with healthcare organizations come in and assess where we believe the risks are of the misstatement of the financial statements. And ultimately, we're able to plan our audit and incorporate all the proper elements to carry it out in accordance with professional standards. And at the end of the day, we focused a lot on the estimates and ultimately were comfortable that there was no bias in those estimates, mainly around your patient accounts receivable and some of the cost report settlements with third-party payers and the like. And so management spends a lot of time estimating and coming up with reasonable estimates there. And we were very comfortable with the estimates and that they were based on good and sound data. As far as accounting policies go, there were no real changes in accounting policies this year. There will be a new, you know, some new policies coming down the line in the coming year around the post-employment benefits plan that the hospital has, and so those standards will be implemented during fiscal year '18. Other than that, the disclosures in the financials were, you know, consistent with the prior year and no big changes there. Management did provide a rep letter dated January 25th. That was the date of our audit report. And at that point, we were, we had everything that we need to be able to support our audit opinion. There are certain information included in the audit that's referred to as supplementary information, mainly supplemental combining schedules and some other schedules required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development related to some of the outstanding debt as, you know, they do, you know, ensure the mortgage outstanding that the hospital has. Lastly, if there were any disagreements with management or any difficulties encountered in performing the audit, I would let you know that. And I'm very pleased to report that, you know, for a new firm like us to come in and have an audit that went almost without a hitch is fairly rare. And so we were very pleased with how that process went, it being the first year and us getting to know each other a little bit and that sort of thing. So very pleased with how that went, full cooperation received from management. As far as any audit adjustments go, you know, there were no audit adjustments that were recorded. We did record, you know, one reclassification entry, which is more of a presentation item. And there was one adjustment that management provided to us to true-up the amount related to the 403B plan and the amount of $27,000. We don't consider that to be material overall to the financials. And one reclassification entry that was not recorded, again, another presentation item that management elected not to record. We, as auditors, were comfortable with that because, again, we don't believe that it's material overall. That's a summary of the communications that were required to make. Any questions on that piece? If not, I just want to hit on a couple of the financial highlights of the authority. So the page eight of the presentation is a summary of the statement of net position otherwise known as the balance sheet of the authority. The authority had $134.5 million in assets as of the end of the year. Probably the biggest change was the decrease in the assets limited as to use or the investments used during the year. And a lot of that was liquidated, about $10.6 million decrease, mainly liquidated to fund some of the capital needs of the authority during the year. The following page is the combined statement of revenues and expenses. A couple of the highlights here, you know, the authority did have a decrease in revenues during the year of about 3.7% driven by, you know, a reduction in volumes on the inpatient side, some turnover at the physician level, several physicians left during the year, which affected Onslow Ambulatory Services and the revenue from there. Certainly, the continued decreasing payment from TRICARE on the inpatient side, which is an issue affecting all Soul community hospitals across the country when it, you know, when it comes to TRICARE reimbursement. So they seen some trends there that resulted in some, a decrease in patient revenue during the year. And then also, there was a reduction in the electronic health records incentive money that hospitals have been the beneficiary of for the last four years. That ended in '16, you know, for the hospital, and so that was gone, of course, in '17. And again, that's something that all hospitals were able to take advantage of for a four-year period. That's now gone. And so you see a little bit of a decrease there in the other revenues to that effect. On the expenses side, you see, you know, certainly, again, with the physician turnovers, the salaries and benefits were down this year, and a lot of that was replaced and in some cases, you know, replaced and then some with the physician fees and purchase services. So, you know, a lot of the locum coverage is necessary, the travelers, to replace some of the physicians that turned over and be able to maintain productivity and serve the patients that the hospital sees. Of course, also, the medical malpractice experience of the hospital, you know, drove an increase in expenses as well during the year. At the end of, at the end of the, at the end of the year, the hospital experienced an operating loss of about $7.9 million. The other thing that I thought was worth pointing out was that, on the next slide, was the bad debt and charity care. This is the level of uncompensated care that's provided by the authority, you know, and it's split up there between your bad debt and your charity. And so the hospital provided during fiscal '17 approximately 11.2% of its total gross patient revenue was uncompensated care in the form of either bad debt or charity care expense. And so that, you can see the numbers on the right, that totals just over $50 million in uncompensated care provided by the hospital and the authority during the year ended September 30, 2017. That does compare probably somewhere in line with some of the peers and other hospitals we work with on the eastern part of the state. You know, we have some closer to the 95 corridor that are around eight or nine percent. We also have some that are in excess of 13%. And so you tend to fall within that range of what we see, you know, elsewhere. The only other thing I wanted to report tonight was on the internal controls. You know, it's a big, a key part of the audit is to look at the processes that are in place that ultimately lead to the numbers in the financial statements. There were no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies that we became aware of during our audit. We believe that, you know, those would be of the level that rise to, that we have to communicate with the hospital and authority board and would share with you as county commissioners. Nothing rose to that level. And so we were actually, again, we think the hospital has good processes in place that lead to the numbers in the financial statements and controls. So I'm going to pause there and want to make sure we allow time for any questions, but those are the highlights of the 2017 audit for the Onslow County Hospital Authority.
Is there other hospitals similar size to Onslow that's going through some of these growing pains that Onslow is going through now? And how many are they? And what have some of them done to get out of that hole?
Yeah, no, I think that's a great question. So it's no secret, and I know management is well aware of the fact that the environment in which to operate a, you know, really any sort of healthcare entity, but especially a hospital in a health system, is not getting any easier to operate in. There's higher expectations, decreasing payments from payers. It's just, it's just a trend we're seeing everywhere. And so it makes it very difficult in which to operate. So yes, other systems are seeing the same pressures. You know, the first thing and the easiest thing to do is to really look at the expenses structure of the organization and try to cut that where you can, obviously be as lean as possible. But you can only do so much of that. At a certain point, you get to the point where you're operating very lean and it becomes necessary to grow the revenue side. And so I know management of the authority here, as well as other systems in eastern North Carolina, have plans in place that they believe will increase the revenues and hopefully create other revenue streams for the benefit of the system.
Can you give us an example of what kind of expenses are included in this $16.5 million of other expenses on page nine?
Well, one of the, one of the most significant pieces off the top of my head is the medical malpractice expense. That certainly becomes a, for any health system, you know, there's claims that are brought against the system. And so that's a big piece of it. And then it becomes just a lot of your other, you know, your travel and your education costs and, you know, continuing, you know, other expenses of the organization. But probably the, the one that comes to mind is medical malpractice is a good example.
Anybody else have any questions for the auditor? The auditor, we had our auditor look at the report and the audit looks clean to them too. So we're concerned more with the numbers than we are the audit. So I think everything that you guys did was absolutely perfect. But after receiving these audit numbers, it's sort of troubling that we have our community hospital that's facing all of the challenges that they're facing now and having that much loss of revenue. And after having conversation with the hospital board, some of the hospital board members and Dr. Burlingame Deal, they're trying to find ways to increase revenue, get better services, provide more services. But it seems like the hole keeps getting bigger and bigger. So my thought is to find a way to, the hospital, I think, and authority maybe needs to find a, I'm sure they're working on it, but they need to develop a plan. Like other hospitals have a Plan A and a Plan B. I think from what Dr. Burlingame Deal was telling me, they have a few irons in the fire now to help dig out. But that may not be enough to get our hospital back vital. Our hospital is a vital part of our economics of Onslow County. It's a vital tool for our citizens to have a place to go. And I think we're at a point now that we need to explore partnerships with other institutions or other agencies that may come in and help us to determine what we need to do to get our hospital back in the black. I know that 2015, we were doing pretty good. Last year, we didn't do too bad. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think we had a half a million dollars in good money last year. But this year took, 2017 took a turn for the worst, not because of our hospital necessarily, but all the problems that come with Affordable Care Act and Medicare reimbursement, Medicaid reimbursement, Blue Cross and Blue Shield reimbursement. They not paying what they were paying before, they've cut their reimbursement costs. So that, that really hurts the people. And then on top of that, we had $15 million of unpaid, uncollected debt. And it's hard to run an operation with $15 million that don't pay. And it's sort of like the county, we've got right at $7 million of people hadn't paid their county property tax now. And it's going to end up costing our citizens more money, the ones that do pay, just to take care of the ones that don't pay. So it's a catch-22 situation. So I would encourage the authority, and I know we have some authority members out here, there's plenty of people in the business, people in the community, and you know, we're here as commissioners to help do whatever we can, but we, we need to solicit maybe some business people, maybe form an ad hoc committee to study and help report back to the hospital authority members and see what they can come up with as community leaders to get our hospital back in the black and viable. Because we don't want to, we don't want to lose any ground with our hospital. And I think sooner is better than later, if you ask in my opinion about it. But I'm not, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a hospital person. I was on the board one time, but by the time I got to understand the language, it was time for me to step down. So anyway, thank you for your report, and I'm looking forward to seeing the hospital authority members to come up with a plan pretty quick to see what we can do to get dug out of this red, we got to stop the bleeding.
Yep. Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, resolution, no, I'm sorry, Trillium Health Resources, David Tartt. Evening, David.
I'm David Tartt, Southern Regional Director for Trillium Health Resources. I'm a new face to some of you, it's justified. My predecessor in this role did take another job within Trillium in the last year. So I'm beginning, I'm beginning in this role. Thank you very much for having me here and allowing me to present on Trillium's annual report for fiscal year 2017. And I want to take a minute to thank in particular Commissioner Knapp for his service to our Southern Regional Board and to Sherri Slater for her service, not only to our Southern Regional Board, but to our governing board as well. The citizens of Onslow County should know that they're very, they're very well represented in the behavioral healthcare system in eastern North Carolina. And I did just want to set a timer for myself to make sure I'm being respectful of your time. I think you all probably all know this, but for those who may not, Trillium is a local governmental agency charged with managing behavioral healthcare in 25 of the eastern most counties in North Carolina for people who are either covered by Medicaid or who lack insurance entirely. And so we're a little different than other governmental agencies in that we're not the boots on the ground actually providing the services in the same way perhaps a Department of Social Services or a Department of Health would. Instead, we maintain a network of private providers who provide the services and then in turn bill us for the services rendered, much like your doctor or your dentist would if you went to them for an appointment. So you can see in the presentation, Trillium's mission is simply stated, transforming lives of people in need by providing ready access to quality care. Simple in principle, difficult to execute, particularly in light of serious changes that are constantly occurring, but particularly so now with some budget cuts that I'll talk about in a little while, as well as another round of proposed Medicaid reform that's in the works. And speaking of the Medicaid reform, one of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention is a new partnership in which Trillium has engaged. And what we've done is we decided to partner with, who we determined to be some of the other most successful managed care organizations in the public sector in North Carolina. So this is a coalition that we formed called Advancing North Carolina Whole Health, where we're partnering with Alliance in the central part of the state, Vaya in the western part of the state. And what we really hope to accomplish is not a merger. This is not a merger, these organizations are not coming together. But what we are trying to do is to standardize our processes as much as possible across the three organizations with the idea that one of our members would have the same experience if he was contacting Trillium, one of our providers would have the same experience if he was contacting Trillium as he would if he were contacting Alliance or Vaya. And we want the same experience for our stakeholders as well, like yourselves. And what we hope we can accomplish by this is really to maximize our impact as we move into the next round of Medicaid reform. This is a little more of the particulars about Trillium. And technically, this report is on fiscal year '17, but I thought I'd just go ahead and show you the numbers for what we are now. Because as of July 1st, the Secretary of the Department of Health and Human Services did approve Nash County's request to move over and to be managed by Trillium going forward. So now we cover 25 counties with a population of over 1.3 million, approximately 200,000 of whom are Medicaid eligible. So overall, we represent 14% of the total population of North Carolina, 16% of its Medicaid enrollees. I don't have a lot of time to go into our annual gaps and needs analysis in depth, but I did want everyone to know this, an important part of our process every year, to look at all the available data that we have. Internal data on services provided, where our enrollees are, where our members are, where our providers are. Look at national data about prevalence rates and what we should expect to see in terms of prevalence of mental health, substance use, and intellectual or other developmental disability issues in our area. And then the valuable information we get from our survey process. And so I just wanted to take a minute to, again, thank our Southern Regional Board, our Consumer and Family Advisory Group, which meets six times a year right here in Jacksonville, because they really did a great job this year outreach in the community, and we did have a record response to our survey. And not surprisingly, what's first and foremost on people's mind is access to care and increased access to care, which of course is a priority for Trillium as well and the purpose of this exercise in the first place. This is probably a good time, sorry, probably a good time as we talk about services rendered in fiscal year 2017 to talk about the service dollar cuts that we've endured. So in the last two budget cycles, the two years that have just passed and the two years upcoming, the bottom line is that Trillium has endured a $53 million cut. And that's a cut in the service dollars for largely the population that we cover that doesn't have insurance at all. So, but with those cuts, also came in order for Trillium, what they call a maintenance of effort for us, which means that although we aren't being reimbursed for those services anymore, we continue to have to provide them through our provider network. So we have to continue to pay for them even though the state is no longer paying for them. So what that means is, and I think, and it's been fairly highly publicized, the impact that that's had on our reinvestment plan. So to take you back a little ways, when the, when the state was first moving behavioral healthcare under managed care principles, they decided to keep this in the public sector. So without profit motive, what's to happen to the savings? Well, it was designed so that the MCOs, us, we would have the ability to take those savings, reinvest them into our communities to hopefully meaningfully make an impact on some of the gaps and needs that have traditionally existed in our service system. With the cuts, that has forced us to essentially take those savings and transfer them over to pay for the services that were traditionally paid for by the state in the past. However, in 2017, we were able to ultimately serve almost 53,000 people, 79% of whom have, were diagnosed with a mental health issue, approximately 20% with a substance use disorder, and just under 10% with an intellectual or other developmental disability. Obviously, that doesn't add it to 100%, and I think perhaps it's obvious as well, it's because people can have diagnoses that cross, across that spectrum. But the total value of services rendered was $355 million in 2017, and the services were all provided with, through our network of providers who are 429 strong. So I don't have time again to discuss in detail Trillium's priorities. We do have a list of priorities every year to focus our efforts across the organization. But I did want to spend some time on one, talking about the response to the opioid crisis. So North Carolina has helped us here. They were able to secure a $31 million federal grant that they then have routed mostly through the MCOs to serve people through the Cures Act. So our allocation for the first year was $1.2 million, and that funding came with a mandate to serve people who had either not received any treatment for opioid issues in the past or people who had in the past and were now returning to care again. And I can report that during the first six months, Trillium was able to draw down the entire 1.2 million. If that shows the... entire 1.2 million, if that shows the extent of the need, and served 1,269 new individuals with that money. And in addition to what the state has helped us provide, these initiatives were largely a result of our reinvestment efforts. And some of the things that we've done to, to address the opioid crisis were the Healing Transitions Project, which as many of you know, was originally intended to bring not one, but two facilities to our area. And there is ongoing conversation with county leadership and other counties about possibly keeping that vision alive and bringing that to fruition. But in the meantime, we have continued to be able to route people to Raleigh when it's needed. And this is one of the traditional gaps. I'm a substance abuse counselor by trade. This is one of the traditional long-term gaps in the substance use treatment system. Some people need longer-term care. So Healing Transitions offers people an opportunity to have access to a longer-term peer-led residential treatment. And likewise, Oxford Houses also, Trillium's been able to bring 11 new Oxford Houses to our area, which provide a sober living environment for people who, who either are unable, or it's not the right time for them to return to the, to the, to the place where they lived before. In addition, we've distributed over 2,245 naloxone kits. Most of you probably know what that is. But again, these are kits that are designed, and we've asked that most of our kits through the harm reduction be delivered to law enforcement, so that they can have this potentially life-saving drug to administer in the case where someone is overdosed. And, and finally, we have wellness cities and outreach groups across our counties from our wellness cities that link people, peers, link people who are in recovery to people who need recovery. And these things, I'm happy to also announce that despite the needed suspension of most of our reinvestment efforts, these things are able to continue, and the reason for that is our, our county contributions. So although our, our county contributions overall are a small percent of our budget, they're able to keep alive these important kinds of programs that again are, are aimed at addressing gaps in the service, gaps that the Medicaid and, and state services do not pay for. And finally, I wanted to conclude just by showing some of the, the numbers of people served in Onslow County in 2017. That amounted to over 6,900 individuals served, over 6,000 people with a mental health diagnosis, 778 with a substance use disorder diagnosis, and over 500 with an intellectual or other developmental disability. And again, these, these numbers don't add up to the total, and that's because people do crossover across these groups. So thank you for letting me be here, and thank you for letting me go over my time a little bit. Are there any questions I can answer?
I don't have any questions, David. I just want to kind of say something. First, I want to say thank you for the briefing. It's probably one of the better briefings I've ever had from Trillium.
Thank you.
Absolutely. In fact, the last meeting, I was a little upset because of the lack of information that was provided, so I applaud you for that. And, and I wanted to say something publicly, too. You know, we hear things about Trillium, but what people don't understand is that David works hand-in-hand with Sherri and Mr. Cotton. And David being with Trillium has been instrumental in our task force for our, for our Detox Mental Health Crisis Center. And I just wanted to say that publicly and applaud you because I've worked with David one-on-one, I've talked to David. He's one of the few guys that's approachable, that will answer your question when you have a question with details, and he's not afraid to argue with you, too, and to, to share his viewpoint. And, and I know that Trillium is working very hard despite the, the cuts that you guys are facing and that you're focusing in on the opioid problem within this, within this state. And I applaud you for that because, like, right now, my wife, for example, is in Greensboro, and she's a therapist, she's a counselor, she's going through a four-day training session in terms of opioid abuse and things like that. So she's feeding me information back, and it's, it's astounding, the information they're providing. And, but I just wanted to say thank you personally for working on the task force with us because you have been instrumental in that and helping us form this to get our facility stood up by August timeframe of this year, and I applaud you. And let me say one other thing, too. David mentioned something about the money that has contributed to Trillium, and I applaud you for saying what you did because last time, when I asked a question in reference to where was our money being spent, I couldn't get a specific answer. Now, we know where our money is being spent, that we allot to you this, to you because it's going to our Detox Mental Health Crisis Center. And, and I just want to say thank you for your job well done. I appreciate it, and I enjoy working with you on this task force.
I really appreciate those kind words, and I can only say it's a pleasure to, to serve a community that's so invested in addressing these critical issues.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
David, since opioid addiction is a national epidemic, the president formed a mental health opioid addiction task force and supposedly appropriating funding for that. Do you know how that's coming along and how much, I know that our governor's on that particular task force. Is any money going to be coming from the federal government that will, I know, I know it sounds prejudiced, but I want to know what's going to happen for Onslow County. I know everybody needs money, and I know everybody's got the same situation, but I'd like to know what's going to happen with Onslow County and the funding we may get from any federal assistance, so we can apply it. Our hospitals and having to engage in, in this, Craven Regional is engaged with mental health and drug addiction and substance abuse, like everybody else. But you have any general knowledge on that that you could share with us and the public that's listening?
Not, but not much beyond, and that I've read those stories as well. Nothing has, nothing concrete's been delivered in, in terms of how that's going to benefit, at least to my knowledge, how that's going to benefit our citizens. I do think we're particularly well-represented at the state level by our chief executive officer, Lisa Wainwright, and I think we're positioned as well as anyone can, anyone can be. But there are a lot of things that are up in the air right now. And frankly, the existence of the managed care, public managed care system in North Carolina is, is still, it's still very much in jeopardy. So I think, you know, we've appreciated the support we've gotten from this Board of Commissioners in the past. As much as there's an opportunity to advocate with the legislators with whom you have relationships, I think it's important to let them know that it's a priority for you to keep as much of what we do in our communities as possible. And I think that's our best chance to benefit as we all move forward and, and find out what's going to be coming from the federal government to address the crisis. I hope that answers the question. You know, I, I think there's been benefit to having this in our communities. I think there's been benefit in, in us being able to be here in this room, and a benefit to having our, our, the people we serve represented on our Governing Board, to have our county commissioners represented on our boards. And the idea of it going away at this point would be disheartening, because I don't think that a larger system would be, would be able to deliver that same kind of local presence.
Anybody else?
Mr. Tartt, I, I didn't quite understand how you overcome a $50 million reduction in income. Is that, do you have to reduce services? Do you have a fund balance?
Fund balance, yeah.
Can you print money like the federal government?
Well, when you, when we came in and began utilizing managed care principles, that's appealing to the state for a variety of reasons, but primarily, or I shouldn't say primarily, that's not fair. But one of the main benefits is the savings that can be realized versus traditional fee for service Medicaid. So there were a lot of savings upfront when we first came in and started managing. I, you know, I, I like to say that the people who are making those decisions at that time made some really good decisions. And so that was where the lion's share of the savings were to be achieved. And now, the rate at which we're reimbursed has dropped accordingly, as the fiscal analysis and new rates each year are based on what's expended the year before.
Most of your funding is federal and state money, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So continuous reductions from those sources will eventually be a serious issue for us.
Well, that's a, you know, the thing about savings, as we all know, is that they aren't, aren't, they aren't ongoing. Once they're spent, they're spent. We're reaching that point now. So what comes next and the decisions that will be made going forward will determine the success of, of, of the ability for our clinicians with their boots on the ground to be successful going forward. And so there's a lot in the, up in the air right now, and the General Assembly is considering a lot of high-level issues that will determine how this goes forward. The Secretary of the Department of Health and Human Services had issued, has issued a plan that peers designed to keep a segment of what we do available, and a segment of those dollars, serving the people with the highest needs in, in the local areas with the, with the public MCOs possibly. But they haven't yet, the legislature's not yet committed to supporting that plan. So there's a lot to be determined. Hopefully, I'll be able to come back next year and deliver a very upbeat message that we're moving forward in a way that's going to keep what we do relevant in our local communities.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, David.
General items under five, our resolution in support of passage of House Bill 866, Senate Bill 542, Public School Building Bond Act of 2017. Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'll read the resolution into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Resolution 18 Tag 003, to support the passage of House Bill 866 and Senate Bill 542, the Public School Building Bond Act. Whereas the Public School Building Bond Act has been introduced in the North Carolina General Assembly as House Bill 866 and Senate Bill 542. And whereas if passed, the Public School Building Bond Act would allow voters to decide if issuing a bond to pay for school construction is needed. And whereas North Carolina General Statute 115(c) Tag 408 designates the state must provide instructional and operational expenses for public schools, and that the county must fund facilities requirements. And whereas when the North Carolina Education Lottery was established, the lottery law required that counties receive 40% of lottery proceeds for public school construction needs. But over time, funds have been diverted for other educational-related expenses. From 2012 until 2017, the legislature provided a lump sum appropriation every year in the amount of $100 million statewide to be shared among 100 counties, which equates to roughly 17% of the lottery proceeds. However, most of the money must go to debt service on current school buildings. And whereas based on the 2016 statewide facility need survey, the Department of Public Instruction identified that North Carolina's public schools need more than $8.1 billion to pay for new school facilities, long-deferred maintenance and renovations, including a need for 118 new school structures statewide. And whereas the 2016 statewide facility need survey estimated that Onslow County schools will need more than $110 million over the next five years for renovations and new schools, not including the potential impact of recent classroom mandate legislation, the proposed bond would help close the funding gap by delivering $25 million to Onslow County for school construction. And whereas the voters in the state of North Carolina have passed school construction bonds in the past, approximately every 10 years, in 1949, 1953, 1963, 1973, 1986, and 1996. And whereas passing the Public School Building Bond Act, House Bill 866, Senate Bill 542, would place the bond issue on the ballot statewide, and voters could decide the important issue of whether a school construction bond is needed again. Now therefore be it resolved that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners hereby respectfully urges the General Assembly to pass the Public School Building Bond Act, House Bill 866, Senate Bill 542, to add the bond to the ballot and allow voters to weigh in on the school funding issues and potentially provide additional funding for school construction. Adopted this blank day of blank 2018. It's available for commission consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. End of discussion. All in favor of a motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Here we'll move on now to fiscal year 2017 amended audit contract. Mr. McColl?
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. The item we have before you is the amended audit contract with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram for the fiscal year 1718 audit. Per, per the General Statutes 159-34A, we're required to come before you to get board approval for amended audit contract. The reason why we are bringing this to your, for your approval is due to the fact that Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, their inability to provide the audit, complete the audit, and submit the audit to the local government commission by the prescribed due date of December 15th, 2017. The reason listed by the firm on the amended contract was there was a change in managing partners to handle the audit engagement of Onslow County. And the amended contract has a due date to be submitted to the, for the audit to be submitted to the Local Government Commission by February 28th of 2018. We're hoping to have that submitted to the LGC earlier than that time period. We've had draft financials, we've had draft audit exhibits that I reviewed on Friday. We're hoping to get the notes to the audit to review hopefully tomorrow or Wednesday, and we'll get that out to the LGC shortly thereafter. The amended contract is for the amount of $49,950. It's reduction to the original contract that was approved by this board in the spring of 2017 by the amount of $5,550. With that said, I respectfully request that you consider approval of the amended contract with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram and for the fiscal year 2017 audit, and authorize the Chairman of the Board to sign the contract on behalf of the Board. And with that said, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have concerning this matter.
Motion.
Some of.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. End of discussion. All in favor of a motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. McColl. Airport airfield lighting improvement project, North Carolina Department of Transportation grant acceptance. Mr. Chris White.
Evening, sir. Evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. On June 19th, 2017, the Board of Commissioners approved a project ordinance for the airfield, the Airport Airfield Lighting Improvement Project. This project is funded by a $1.4 million grant from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Division of Aviation, and 100, approximately $155,556 in pasture facility charges. The NCDOT has awarded Onslow County the first part of this grant in the amount of $89,989 for the design. This grant will be increased to the full $1.4 million after construction bids are received. Bids for this project are actually due March 1st. The specific action requested is staff respectfully requests that the Board of Commissioners accept the $89,989 grant from the NCDOT, thereby committing $9,999 of PFCs, and authorize the Chairman to execute the associated grant documents on behalf of Onslow County, as well as execute the documents associated with the receipt of the anticipated remaining balance of $1.4 million grant, thereby committing a combined total of $155,556 in PFCs.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. End of discussion. All in favor of a motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir. Ms. Angela Lee? Ms. Angela Lee, your health director.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Mr. Cotton. In November of 2017, the Board of County Commissioners approved the Onslow County Health Department, accepting Homeland Security grant funding through North Carolina's Domestic Preparedness Region 3 to purchase three port account fit testing machines. The machines would be housed at the Onslow County, Carteret, and Brunswick County Health Departments and serve as regional assets. The port accounts have been ordered and received, and staff from the three health departments have been trained on the machines. North Carolina Emergency Management and the Department of Homeland Security require that Onslow County have a signed memorandum of agreement to officially transfer the port accounts to Brunswick County. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the memorandum of agreement and authorize Mr. David B. Cotton, County Manager, and Ms. Angela Lee, Health Director, to sign the memorandum of agreement with Brunswick County.
Motion approved. Motion, second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think the next one is yours, too.
It is, thank you. This would be the same agreement with Carteret County. And North Carolina Emergency Management and the Department of Homeland Security require that Onslow County have a signed memorandum of agreement to officially transfer the port account to Carteret County as well. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the memorandum of agreement and authorize Mr. David B. Cotton, County Manager, and Ms. Angela Lee, Health Director, to sign the memorandum of agreement with Carteret County.
So motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of Adjustment Appointment, I mean Consolidated Human Services Committee, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. On June 10th of 2013, the Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution 13-010, which effectively consolidated all of human services under county government. The 11 members, as established by North Carolina General Statute 130a-35, states the composition and makeup of the board. The vacancy that is requested tonight is seat four, which is general. It has been advertised, and the application is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office. It is respectfully requested that the Commissioners consider the appointment of Mr. Fernando Scheffelbein for general category, seat number four, for remaining three-year term expiring on November 18th, 2020.
Any motion to approve?
Second.
End of discussion. All in favor of the appointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Onslow Board of Adjustment, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. John Davis, for the Swansboro category of the Board of Adjustments, has tendered a letter of resignation, and Mr. Roger Brown has expressed a willingness to serve and has submitted a citizen participation application for your consideration. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The application is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office. It is respectfully requested that the Commissioners consider the appointment of Mr. Roger Brown for the Swansboro category for a remaining three-year term expiring January 31st, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second. End of discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're now to the consent agenda, and by request of Commissioner Bennett, we pulled Section F, which is Workers' Compensation Settlement Authority. Go ahead, Royce.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's important for the public to know that, that there are checks and balances involved in the spending of this money and that, and where those funds originate from. And I would just ask Mr. Cotton if he could explain how this process works and how this money's going to be spent.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Bennett, Commissioners. The, the county's workers' compensation fund, we are self-insured, so we have greater discretion and authority to settle essentially on our own without necessarily a, a third party. And historically, how this, this, this authority that has been delegated to, to staff has had a, a single point of decision-making. What we have proposed is that the county manager and the county attorney, in consultation with each other, having, have decision-making authority up to $100,000. Because when, when we usually get to a settlement point, it involves a mediation and having the ability to resolve any outstanding workers' compensation claim on that same day is, is really an industry standard or a standard business practice. And of course, that would be reported back to the Commissioners any, anytime that there is a, there is a settlement. We typically don't have that many. Human Resources has done a tremendous job in, with a return-to-work program, as, as well as settling out and for those that rise to that level. Not to put you on the spot, but do you have anything to add?
No, I would just add that the, we have a recommendation from a third-party attorney that provides an evaluation of the workers' comp claim and what their evaluation is. And of course, so we'll have an evaluation from a third-party attorney, and then Mr. Cotton and myself at that point would take that evaluation into consideration. And if, if we agreed with the evaluation, if it was under $100,000, we could sign off on that authority.
So there are actually three people that are approving of this settlement before it's made?
That's correct.
Yes.
Then the funding comes from the insurance anyway, doesn't it?
It, it come, it, like I said, we, we are self-insured, so we, we fund that. We do have excess insurance, so if it were a significant claim that exceeded our stopgap, then, then the insurance dollars would kick in.
Any further on that?
No, I'd make a motion in that case to give the county manager and county attorney the authority to make those settlements.
Second. Motion and a second. All, any, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on now to item eight, public comment. Anyone signed up for the last half?
No, sir, no one has signed up.
Okay, we are at managers' comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'll be brief, I just have two. Of course, next week is our State of the Community Address on the, on the 28th, looking forward to that. And also want to give recognition and accolades to our health department. They just went through their re-accreditation, and the first year that their re-accreditation is eligible with honors. Of course, our health department has, has risen to that level and, and made that distinction. So we just did not meet the re-accreditation minimum standards. They designated it with honors. So if it pleases the board, I'd like to bring Ms. Lee and, and her key staff that were involved with that to, to recognize them at an upcoming Commissioners' meeting.
Absolutely.
Definitely.
Without a doubt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner comments, I'll start with Mr. Bennett.
I don't have any comments. Thank you for being here, be careful going home, have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Price.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank our state legislature for passing a common-sense piece of legislation, HB 90, to phase in the class size over a period of three years until the 2021, 22 school year, which will give us time. It doesn't solve the problem, but it gives us time to begin the process of building, and hopefully the school-wide bond will be on the ballot, give voters a chance to vote on that as well, which would help us out with that as well. Also, I'd like to congratulate the wrestlers from Onslow County who competed in the North Carolina Wrestling State Championships. Know that I did see one on Twitter that was a state champion. I don't, I hesitate to call out names, but I did see this guy from Dixon High School, Thomas Hudson, was a state champion, so I just want to mention him. I don't know if there were others, but that's the only one I saw from, if there's others, I'll, I'll make sure I come back and acknowledge them later. We have started our budget consideration last Tuesday with a budget workshop, began to outline some goals for, for the budget coming up, and so I'm sure there'll be some challenges in, in doing that, but we're, we're gonna get it done. And thank you for coming tonight. That's it.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Thank you, sir. Angela, thank you, as usual, you and your staff, HR, your staff, thank all of you for what you do. I mean, it's amazing, you've heard me say it many, many times, we've got the best employees in the, in the nation, not in the county, not in the state, but in the nation. You do such a good job for us, and when that board came in here and sat down with myself and Commissioner Knapp, they were so impressed, I don't think they knew, I don't think they wanted to go anyplace else. They were so impressed with the, with the two Commissioners, because we sat down, you were on the phone, and we talked with the, the board that came in and did the accreditation, and I'm so proud of you and your staff, and Sherry for what you do, and Heidi, it's just amazing for everybody what you do for us. And for David coming in from Trillion, and I want to thank David for coming here, because I'm gonna tell you, like Commissioner Knapp said, we didn't have no numbers. When the last time somebody came from Trillion in front of us, it was embarrassing to this board to listen to that individual not be able to give us numbers. And tonight, David gave us those numbers, and that means a lot, and Trillion's come a long way with me, as some people will know, because I've had some dealings with the CIT training over the past, and CIT is very, very important to us. And with that, I'll say good night, and everybody have a safe trip home.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
I just want to reiterate with Commissioner Buchanan, say congratulations, Angela, I remember that, that was a interesting interview for the accreditation, and they, if you, I know many of you weren't there, obviously, but they were highly, highly impressed, and I think it's well deserved, and I know that Sherry, that you're, that you're over there and you're, and you're working it, so to speak, you know, at your job, and I appreciate everything that you do. And also to echo what Commissioner Buchanan said, and I know you're still here, I was really impressed that David came today and provided the information that he did, because in the last meeting, like Mr. Buchanan said, it was embarrassing. I felt bad, because I asked a direct question to, to the former director, and they couldn't provide an answer in reference to Onslow County. So obviously, David had his information, but I also want to say thank you to David, Cotton, and Sherry, because, because of their relationship with Mr. Tart and how they stay in contact with him and the professional working relationship, I should say, that has aided tremendously in the success of what we're trying to do. And I could tell you firsthand that I think David is really personally interested in our Detox Mental Health Crisis Center. He's behind it 100%, and that's, that's half the battle, to get somebody like Trillion to get on board with our project and to push forward, that's a big stick. So I just want to say thank you, and please tell David thank you again for, for coming. It was an awesome briefing, and I really appreciate his effort and his time, because I know he's got to drive home now. So, but thank you very much. Other than that, thank all of you for attending. Be safe out there, and hopefully the weather will stay warm and we'll hit the 70s and 80s here in the next couple of days. But thanks for coming out.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'd like to thank the hospital authority members and coming and giving us an audit report and listening to some of the things I had to say to, that I thought were important to our hospital. I hope they can find a way to get us back in the black with our hospital, hoping and praying. We've got a lot of people that depend on our hospital, and I'm hoping they'll get us back up and running. We've been that road before, and it always has come back, so there's always hope. But as far as, I think next month, the foreclosure notices will go into, not foreclosure, but the late tax payment individuals will go in the paper. And I've already started getting calls from people that owe two or three years' taxes back. They wait until they get the sheriff to serve a paper on them, and once the sheriff serves that foreclosure notice, according to our attorney, it's too late, then they have to pay an attorney fee per partial, and it's $1,200 extra per partial. So they would be well wise to catch up their back taxes. We got right at $7 million of unpaid, uncollected property taxes. So I would encourage folks to not, to get out from under that gun of the $1,200 per partial, because that's the standard fee, according to Mr. DeSims. People are calling me to see if they can get some help with that, but there's nothing we can do as Commissioners to help them once they get to that point, other than to say, you know, go ahead and pay it. I'm hoping that that don't happen, but I'm hoping people will get on board and get their taxes paid and keep us from having to raise taxes in order to collect them. And we did have a budget workshop last week, and here's how we do it. We, we set out goals for our county manager, we tell him where our budget road needs to be, then he goes ahead and starts paving the road for us. So that's the way it's been working, that's worked very well, and I appreciate the hard work that our staff, David and the staff and our assistant and deputy county managers has worked to do that. So I appreciate that. We're moving really forward with our airport, thanks to Chris and the grants that you've got us, don't, it's all money that's not coming out of the taxpayer's pocket to see that fabulous facility out there, Mr. Crown Jewel. It's just a little bit bumpy getting there with the roads, but that's not your fault. Other than that, I say have a safe trip home, good night to all of you. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.